Okay, welcome, welcome, everybody. Right on time.
Why you in that?
Perfect. Good afternoon, everybody. How are you?
Good.
I am Ryan Erzmann with the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, joined here by Pam Kelly, who is the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce of Greater Montgomery County. We are so excited to be here. We are obviously excited to have all four candidates who are, you'll hear a lot from today as you're making informed decisions on Election Day. And of course Lauren Mack of NBC 10, who has been moderating. So we're so grateful for everybody who's been here. Just a couple of brief announcements. If you need to get something to eat, the food's back there. Bathroom's to the left. And the debate itself, or the forum, as we call it at the luncheon forum, will last approximately one hour in time. And Lauren will kind of explain the rules and the format. And the two chambers, just so that everybody knows, we're bipartisan. We, and I guess I speak on behalf of Pam, do have a great relationship with all of our local and state and federal officials. So we don't endorse any particular candidate, but I think Pam would agree that we do endorse everybody to show up on Election Day to vote for whoever you feel is the best candidate for this position. This idea actually came from me by one of the current county commissioners who is resigning. We should do a meet the county commissioner luncheon. And he said to me, we should do it at the best campus in America. And so he said, Temple, and you should do a debate. So this is how it came to be. So we do a lot of meetings throughout the year with our state representatives, our township supervisors. I reckon that Pam's group does the same. Two very great organizations. So if you're not a member of either chamber, please join one or join both so that you can be able to be part of the conversation of the business community. I wanted to acknowledge our sponsors. Temple Ambler, I don't see him right now, but he'll be popping in. And Tony Bruno, who has been a real warrior for us in putting this together. The best community college in the county, Montgomery County Community College. We have representatives here from there. Independence Blue Cross. We have some representatives from Pugil. I see Suzanne is here, so thank you. Harleysville Bank, McMahon Bolling Company, and Independence Blue Cross, and Comcast. I see Jan here from Comcast. So thank you to all of our sponsors. I wanted to thank my board members. Two of her are here right now. I don't know if the third has shown up yet, but Kevin, yes?
He hasn't come in.
Yeah, he will be here. I'm sure he comes two minutes late. But Kevin, who's our board president, give a wave, Kevin. And Gary, who's serving the dual purpose day, not only is our board vice president, but also the timekeeper for today's event. There you go. So if you know your time's up or you want your order to be ready, there you go. And so we did acknowledge Shelley from my office. Wave Shelley, who is the, no offense, Pam's got a great team. Shelley is the best person I've ever worked with in my career, so we're blessed to have her. And if you want information about us, montgomerycountychamber.org. I'm going to let Pam tell you about some of her events. But the next event that we have from our chamber is in two weeks, Shelley. It's our Women's Luncheon Symposium, and it's going to be at Arc Alliance. Obviously, men and women are both welcome, but a lot of the people we're speaking are talking about women in the workplace and a lot of different events around that. We do this every year, and it's really a terrific event. So we highly recommend you come to that. The two chambers together, we're going to be doing an event that you should be on the lookout for on the 19th of December, a mixer. And I also wanted to recognize, there's a third chamber that's representing here tonight. June, if you want to stand up and wave. June is the new Executive Director. From the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce. She just started, was it yesterday or last month? Couple months ago. So I'm going to pass this on to Pam, and then we'll get to Lauren.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you to the candidates for joining us today. We really appreciate you giving your time and opportunity to meet you and to hear your plans, should you become a Commissioner, and how you want to leave the county for the next four years. So thank you for being here. To Ryan, to Shelley, and to the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to join in with you today. They did all the work behind the scenes, and we had the opportunity to extend the invitation to our members to participate. So we greatly appreciate that opportunity. So you've heard the announcement, three chambers of commerce. There's actually 10 of us in Montgomery County. And although we are independent organizations, we all have the same mission, and that is to build a strong business community that makes Montgomery County a great place to live, work, and raise a family. So even though we somewhat sound alike, we do walk independent, and now, starting with this event, are doing some events together. Just a quick plug for a couple upcoming events that we have that does not require a membership to participate. We have a Leaders on Board program, which is a virtual board training program. If you're on a nonprofit board or are interested in participating on one, it will give you all the essentials for you to be an active and strong board member. And that kicks off on October 24th. And we also have a Women's Conference. It's our eighth annual Montgomery County Women's Conference. It's going to be held November 3rd at Normandy Farm. All are welcome. It's a full day of networking and professional and personal development. So again, we'd love to have you. And our website is chambergmc.org. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Perfect. All right. So two more things. Number one, and you'll be hearing about the rules, but I also wanted to recognize the two jury commissioners, one Republican, one Democrat, that made up our panel. Mary, I think Mary is here. If you could wave Mary. And Joanne, who also works in the county office. I assure you that nobody here in this room, except for Lauren, knows the questions. But the two jury commissioners, both of them, helped her develop some of the themes and talk about some of the things that are happening in the county. So those are the things that might be coming up. And actually, is it okay if I have you introduce?
I think they're going to introduce some folks.
Okay. So without further ado, I'm going to have each of the county commissioners, or candidates or county commissioners, introduce themselves, and then we're going to pass it on so that they can each do more of a formal introduction. So starting here.
I believe Liz is first.
Okay, let's go with Liz. What do you want them to do?
They're doing a tip.
Okay. The first, we're doing this on flag. So what we're going to be doing is each of the candidates are going to be doing a five-minute?
Up to five minutes.
Up to five-minute introduction of themselves. And Liz will be going first. We'll give you names beforehand. And when her time's up, Gary will give her the buzzer, and then we'll go in order. All right, here you go, Liz.
Thank you so much. Should I hold the mic?
Oh, you can put it in here if you want. What's up?
How long do we have, Ryan?
Five minutes.
It doesn't start yet.
No, I'm not starting yet.
So good afternoon, everyone. So nice to see you here. I'm Liz Berry, and I'm running for Montgomery County Commissioner. Before I begin, before my time starts, I just want to give a shout out to our chambers. So for those of you who don't know, I worked for the Greater Philadelphia Chamber for 15 years. I resigned in June to run full-time. And it's so important to join your local chamber. They do such a great job of growing your small business and helping you flourish in the county. So please do so. That's my thing. All right. So yeah, so I'm Liz Berry. Just a little bit about me. I lived in the county for about 30 years with my husband. We've raised two children here, mostly grown. We've been involved in the county, working on PTOs, sports activities, all of the above, like many of you here, I'm sure. And about 10 years ago, I became increasingly concerned with what was going on in my township. I live in Upper Dublin Township. We had a series of increase in taxes, increasing loss of open space. So I decided to run for Township Commissioner. And I ran, and I won an award that is 30% Republican. And I did so by working very hard. I went door to door to door to door. I met with residents and heard concerns about the issues that they care about. And that's Tom's phone, not mine. Just the Rock. So I'm very proud of that. I won a second term because I really listened to voters and worked on the issues they cared about, which I'll talk about in a moment. I serve on a board where I'm the only Republican. There are seven Democrats, or excuse me, six Democrats. And I've been able to get things done, and I think that's important to note. I've been able to pass budgets with no tax increases for several years. I've been able to reduce expenses, and I've been able to provide innovative ways of providing services. And I think that skill set is really important for electing a county official. You have to have local government experience. It's terribly important. So I'll just outstate that. I've also been successful in preserving over 105 acres of open space in Upper Dublin, and changing local zoning ordinances to ensure we don't have high-density development, but that we drive development to our commercial corridors. So I've worked on revitalizing Fort Washington Office Park, sort of an aging, dying issue flow. And I've worked to bring back the roads and bridges and working to create a municipal authority with the business community to make those improvements. When I first started being a Township Commissioner, I worked with the Turnpike Commission to establish a zip ring into the office park. And I've worked over seven years on that. And I'm proud to say that very soon, we will have an opening from the Turnpike directly into our office park, which encourages businesses to locate here, but it doesn't end to congestion in local communities, which is something we hear a lot about. As I noted, I worked for the Chamber of Commerce for 15 years. I worked on economic development issues, so I helped recruit companies to come to the region. We were agnostic about where they went, but I can tell you, as Montgomery County Commissioner, I'll fight hard to make sure we have businesses located. I also worked on issues in Harrisburg. So when Governor Wolf shut down all the businesses due to COVID, I fought to help keep them open. And I fought against tax increases on small businesses, helping to keep the personal income tax low, because that's a really important tax for our small businesses. I also worked for the 24th Senatorial Senate District, so for Rob Wunderling, then Bob Mensch, and now Tracy Pennecook, who's our terrific state senator, manages that seat. So I know the county well, and I think that's important, too. It's important to know the difference between Lower Marion and Upper Sapper, and the difference between Red Hill and Ambler. And if you've lived here a long time, you know the differences, and you know the people, and you know the issues they care about, and that's important. I also served in the United States Navy. I have a family that's military. My husband served 20 years in the Army. He was a warrant officer, a helicopter pilot. My son just got out of the Army and has now started college, so fingers crossed for my son. And I have a history of public service throughout my career. I served on the Montgomery County Transportation Authority, so I understand those issues. And I served in the Montgomery County Parks and Heritage Boards, and really care about those issues as well, preserving our historic sites. So I have lots of good experience that I think could bring to bear to control the increasing expenses at the county. The county's increasing expenses, about 7% a year increase in taxes each year. We've lost open space, really want to work on that and expanding the farmland preservation program. And I know we'll talk about it today, but crime is a real issue in Montgomery County. What's happening in Philadelphia is bleeding over in Montgomery County. We've seen a double-digit increase in larceny, burglary, auto theft, and we've got to address it. And I hope I get a chance to talk about it, because the county's got a program in place that is reducing bail, that's letting dangerous criminals walk, and we need to address it. Finally, I'll say before I get dinged, I just wanted to note that I think the county needs to be a place where Commissioners respond to the questions that are asked at meetings, and that people are given as much time as they want to discuss the issues that they care about. We do that in Upper Dublin Township. And I'll just finish up by saying, I want to be a Commissioner that works on behalf of all our residents. I want to work up and down the county every day. I'm going to work full-time. I'm not going to hold any other job while I have this job. I promise not to run for any other office.
That's time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service, by the way.
Good afternoon. I'm Commissioner Jamila Winder, and I'm pleased to be here with all of you today. In my time as Commissioner, I've always said, we need a Montgomery County that works for everyone. My focus is to put people first, put in the hard work, and make our county a model of diversity, opportunity, and excellence. Whether working with universities like Drexel, educational organizations like Full Bloom, or as a public servant on the Narsetown area school board, and all the Board of Supervisors in East Norton Township, and now as your county commissioner, making life a little better for people in our community is what gets me up early and keeps me up late. I was just about my son Max's age, five years old, when I moved to, when I realized the heartbeat of this county. We moved from Philadelphia to East Norton, and we were one of the first Black families in the neighborhood. But Montgomery County welcomed us with open arms. My Aunt Carol always told me that leadership runs in our blood. Coming from a lineage of strong, educated women, I've learned that leadership is not just a responsibility, it's a legacy of service. From my grandmother, who was honored as Pennsylvania State Teacher of the Year in 1972, to my mother, a passionate public school educator, I've always had amazing role models to light the way. And then there's my father, who was awarded at Gredeford, embodied being firm and fair, but fair. My parents expected hard work and the results that come from it. They also taught me that service to others is what this is all about. Serving as your county commissioner, I've been hard at work to make our community one where everyone, from our determined seniors to our innovative small business owners, is celebrated and uplifted. And small and large business owners have a huge role to play in creating economic opportunity that works for all of us. Crazy Aaron's is a good example. They have a thriving business and believe that in second chances for those who have paid their debt to society. By actively seeking out the most vulnerable in our community, Crazy Aaron's has not only ensured that they have a vibrant workforce, but that they also give members of our community the opportunity to lift themselves up. Strolling through the vibrant streets of Ambler this past weekend, I can see so much potential in Monaco. The theaters, the restaurants, the art galleries, they aren't just businesses, they're the lifeblood of our community. Why don't we see the same vibrancy in Narsetown, Shellham, Pottstown, Landale? It's clear we need focus on economic development that is driven by local businesses. The county also needs to make sure that we're reducing red tape for our business owners. Recently, I was speaking to a friend that owns a spa in Collegeville, and she found navigating the complexities of starting a business to be completely overwhelming. It should never be that it's that hard to make a living and contribute to our community. I'm committed to ensuring that our county becomes a better partner to our businesses and municipalities, cutting through that red tape. I understand that making these dreams come true is not just about passion, it's about being smart with our resources. So we need a blend of financial responsibility with innovation. It's more than just balancing books. It's about awarding more grants, increasing public-private partnerships to pave the way for more prosperity in our county. Through my time advising organizations, I've seen firsthand the balance, balancing needs of business and community growth. I see these as available funds, and we need to pick them up in Montgomery County. That's why I'm so proud that during my time as Commissioner, we've given over 3.1 million in small business grants, assisting more than 256 small businesses. We strive to make it a little easier for entrepreneurs to plant roots here in Montgomery County and help them thrive. We also have to encourage excellence at the county level when it comes to engaging, hiring, and maintaining good talent. We did this recently by rightsizing our compensation for our county employees. This will ensure you have the best service and partners in your county government who can give you the tools and resources you need to keep doing what you all do best. I look forward to your ideas, best practices, and partnership as we continue to make Monaco great. And partners are critical, so that's why I'm thrilled to be on this journey with Neil McKeja. Together, we are forging ahead to build bridges, create solutions. His deep knowledge and experience make him a valuable teammate, so that we can ensure that we have, reach our potential, and spread opportunity of growth from Narsetown to Schwanesville. So I'm not your typical politician. I'm a daughter, a wife, a mother, neighbor, friend, and above all else, a dedicated public servant. Montgomery County is not just a location on the map for me. It's been home for more than 40 years. Together with your support, we can ensure the heart and soul of Montgomery County continues to shine bright for everyone. Thank you for being a part of this journey, and let's shake the future with unity, purpose, and determination. So Montgomery County works for us all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us here. It's an honor to be a Democratic nominee, along with Commissioner Jamila Winder for County Commissioner. I want to just thank again Pam and Ryan, as well as Shelley and the chamber team and your boards for hosting this. It's incredibly important to give people the opportunity to hear from us and to have this chance to talk about the issues facing our county. So my name is Neil McKeja. I didn't get here through a necessarily direct path. I grew up as the son of immigrants. I'm rural Carbon County, and I didn't necessarily think I'd be in public service. I studied neuroscience. I wanted to go into actually AI, which maybe wouldn't have been very useful right now. But I got a chance early on to be involved in public service. I had the chance to work in the office of the Vice President, who's now the President, and got a sense of what is possible through public service. And I think right now in Montgomery County, especially post-COVID, we have a moment where we have incredible opportunities, but it takes genuine leadership in public service. And I'm proud that I'm running with Jamila, because I think together we have that leadership. So the last several years, I've taught law. After I worked in the White House in the Senate, I went to Harvard Law School and Pennsylvania Scholarship. I came home and I worked on the opioid crisis. I worked for years on the cases that held Purdue Pharmaceutical and other industries accountable for causing the crisis. And now billions of dollars of those funds are coming back to counties like Montgomery County. So one of the challenges that we're going to face is how do we administer those programs? How do we effectively address the crises of addiction that have really ravaged our communities? And given that I've spent years working on those issues, working with public health officials, you know, working with those who are on the ground, families affected by the crisis, I think we're uniquely positioned to address that crisis. The second thing I want to talk about, about this moment for our community, is recognizing at the national level, we've had a number of pieces of legislation that have passed significantly in recent years, whether it's the bipartisan infrastructure bill, CHIPS, or the Inflation Reduction Act. There are billions of dollars of available funds for infrastructure, and whether it's on housing or sustainability, we as a county must be positioned to take advantage of that moment. Having a governor who was a former Montgomery County Commissioner, who understands the needs of the county, but it's going to take leadership to get that done. So having been someone who has worked in state and national governments, I can be someone who can at least help bridge the gaps so that we can get some of those resources here in Montgomery County. Finally, as someone who has worked in the democratic space, I run a civil rights and civic organization to help Indian Americans in my community get involved, turn out to vote, I've seen the promise of what happens when we commit to the American ideals of multiracial, inclusive democracy. None of the bills that I've talked about would have happened if people didn't turn out to vote and make their voices heard. And that's an ideal that we need to make sure we protect here in Montgomery County. So you don't need to, I've taught election laws, I have the last six years, to know that our democratic process is under attack, that there was a court out of some 50 cases around the country in Pennsylvania that was poised to throw out hundreds of thousands of ballots at the direction of our former president, who's now been indicted on those issues. We need people in this office who are going to protect the right to vote, to protect our democratic process. Because everything that we care about, all of the issues that we want to address in our communities will not be addressed unless we have a functioning democracy and a democratic process that's going to look out for everyone and every community. So I'm very proud, Jamila Winder has been already the first Black woman ever to serve on the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners in the history of our county. I'll be the first South Asian or Asian American in Pennsylvania's history to serve. And with our backgrounds, we are going to make sure that we represent every single constituency in this county and engage every community, whether it's on the economic issues that we're talking about, whether it's on mental health, whether it's on affordable housing and sustainability, we're going to represent everyone. And thank you.
You hear me? Can you hear me now?
It's better on the public. Thank you.
Okay, so before I get started, I want to clear something up. I'm not related to John DiBella. He's DiBella, and I'm DiBello. But not that there's anything wrong with that, because I'm sure him and I would have a great time at family reunion. So I just, but I want, because people ask me that all the time, you're related to John DiBella. Well, my dad was John DiBello, so it's close. But anyway, I am Thomas DiBello. I'm running for Montgomery County Commissioner of Liz Berry. This election is very important. This election is about background, experiences, and accomplishments, not just standing and putting out our political agendas. The Montgomery County residents deserve better, and that's what Liz Berry and Tom DiBella are going to do when elected in November, is we're going to provide a better Montgomery County for all the residents throughout. I've been a resident of Montgomery County for over 30 years. I always want to make sure I get this in. I've been married to my wife for 26 years. We have two grown children, and we have two spunky German Shaward Air pointers. So, and my mom was a public school teacher, and my dad was a police officer, so I'm very familiar with public service. I have a master's degree from Penn State University in Information Systems. I have over 27-plus years in corporate America, building large global software systems with Fortune 100, Fortune 50 companies. We, it's been, the industries I've worked in were both the tax industry and the defense industry. In the defense industry, I built NATO-compliant JTAC military solutions or training system for soldiers preparing for combat. In the tax industry, I worked with nine-plus states throughout the United States on this sales tax, the Streamline Sales Tax Initiative. I've met many state officials throughout the country, talking about tax systems and taxing jurisdictions. I spoke several times, many conferences, actually. A few was the National Governors Association. I spoke at the National State Legislators Meeting, and as well as I spoke at the Federation of Tax Administrators. I worked globally with the Organization of Economic Cooperation and Development. I presented in Paris and Washington DC as a subject matter expert in tax and technology solutions. After leaving corporate, I was a small business owner employing 25-plus people. I purchased a distressed organization, turned it into a successful operation, and sold it off a year and a half ago. Over the past 20 years, I'll throw this out there since, you know, party has come up, I am a Republican, and for the past 20 years, I've been elected to several positions throughout Montgomery County. The interesting thing about myself is, as a Republican candidate running for some of the positions I was elected to, I was endorsed at the time by both the Republican Party and the Democratic Party. Because what that means is that I stood up for the community, and they saw the successes that I will bring to the community, and that's why I was endorsed by both parties. I held elective offices, I was Township Supervisor, Township Auditor. I was on the Springford School Board for 12 years. I sat on the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. And I also sat on the Western Career Technology Center, which is formerly known as the Vocational School. I spoke many times in Harrisburg regarding fair school funding, charter school reform, and safe schools. I've also spoken with education leaders throughout the state, as well as globally. I've been very involved in my community for over 20 years. I've coached youth football, basketball, and baseball. I was a founding member of Springford Youth Football and cheerleading, which we have over 400 kids a year participating. And I also created the Inter-County Football League, which has organizations throughout Montgomery County, Chester County, and Berks County, and we're providing an environment for over 3,000 kids annually. I was a board member of Spring City Legion. I was also president of Lubbock Township Economic Development Committee from 2005 to 2010. We received a 2007 Economic Development Award from the Tri-County Chamber of Commerce. In 2009, as mentioned, I was elected to the Springford School Board and served as Board President five times. While on the school board as a finance committee chairman, we eliminated a $15 million spending deficit. Utilized strong financial planning strategies, I reduced the district debt by over $200 million while managing district budgets of $175 million plus. I reduced the annual average tax increase from 5.5% down to 1.8%, including a 0% tax increase in 2007. from 5.5% down to 1.8%, including a 0% tax increase in 2017. I led the effort to create one of the top school police departments in Springford. It was actually, Springford School Districts have been identified as the top 1% of the safest schools now in the entire United States. Also, when I was forepresident, Springford won their first national blue ribbon. I'll end there because there's a lot of other things I'll get to, but I just want to say, I hope that you agree that my experience and background in both the private public sector and my ability to work with people from other municipalities, counties, states and countries is exactly what we need to bring back strong leadership and experience in Montgomery County. So thank you very much.
Can you all hear me okay? Let's see. Can you hear me through the speaker? No? One, two, one, two, one, two? No, we'll use the other mic. We'll use the other mic, that's fine. Hello, everyone? All right, let's get to some questions now that we've gotten to know a little bit about you. I'm going to ask you for some questions that will go to all of you. You will have, you will have up to 90 seconds to answer. If somebody does mention your name, if one of the other candidates does mention your name, then you will have 30 seconds for rebuttal after that. And Lisbury, we started with you. So we are going to rotate the order. Jamila Winder, you'll, you'll be answering this one first and then you'll continue to go in the order that you gave your opening statements in. So you'll, you'll know when it's your, when it's your turn. First, let's talk about public safety in Montgomery County. While you are not running for a law enforcement job, your constituents want to feel safe and they will look to you as public officials to help them feel that way. Tell me what steps that you would take to make people feel safer in Montgomery County?
Great, thanks for that, thanks for that question. So for me, as a mom to a three-year-old, can you not, not hear me? Okay, can you hear me now? Got to hit the switch. Hello? All right, well, it's not working.
Hello?
Oh, there we go. All right. Nope, keep shorting out.
Hello?
All right. Can I borrow your mic?
Hello? Okay, there we go. So hopefully we'll start the clock again. So as a mom to a three-year-old, right, ensuring that our communities are safe is number one. Growing up in a household where my dad was a deputy warden at one of our state correctional facilities, he really stressed the importance of following the rules and obeying the law. And so that was deeply rooted in our value system. And so all my time on the school board in East Arm Township, I always partnered with our school community, our, our police officers to make sure that we are addressing issues that we're facing in, in our, in our community. What I'll say is, my goal is to get to the root calls of why we have the challenges that we have. Over 40% of our budget is focused on Health and Human Services and we know homelessness, job, job loss, poverty, you know, affects people being in and out of the criminal justice system. So I want to partner with Health and Human Services to ensure that we're delivering the right programs to keep people out of the criminal justice system, but then also partnering with our sheriff's office, our DA's office, local law enforcement to ensure that we are, ensuring that there's safe gun ownership in Montgomery County, that we can protect, I think Liz mentioned this, crime from coming over from Philadelphia, ghost guns, illegal guns. And so I will ensure that we partner across our various departments to solve that, that issue. Thank you.
I will follow up on some of what Jamila was just ending on. And she has a three-year-old at home, I have a three-month-old at home. Both of us care deeply about public safety and their futures. And I think in particular, the issue of gun violence. People don't feel safe in places of worship, at schools, at the mall, in movie theaters. We have to make real steps. We have to take real action to prevent gun violence from, from coming too close to home. And I think unfortunately, the state legislature has bound our hands on this issue, but there are things that we can do at the local level that can make a difference. So whether it's through our sheriff or DA's office, we can engage in gun buybacks, we can give out free locks, we can make sure that we take illegal guns off the streets when the DA encounters them. There's a number of things that we can do as well as advocate for the state legislature to give us the chance to enact policies. For example, keeping guns out of the hands of criminals or domestic abusers, people who have been, you know, in the criminal justice system. And making sure that we actually, you know, protect our kids and our families from those who really shouldn't have their hands on these guns in the first place.
Tom DiBello, you're next.
Thank you. Don't start my clock yet. Is this on? Hear me? All right, here we go. Again, I mean, this is a great question and there's, there's, there's good answers to questions and then there's political agenda answers. So my answer to the question is that we need to, we need to go after the core hard issues. One of the things that we've seen in the last two years is Montgomery County has put a bail reform matrix in place. Criminals are arrested, in the morning and the afternoon they're back on the streets. These are real issues. There's also been a national trend, we've seen it, defund the police. Why do you think that we see an increase in crime? When we're out there and we're not supporting our police officers, you're going to see an increase in crime. You have laws that are put, are not being appropriately enforced. You have crime, you see it out of Philadelphia with the looting, right? People, if you steal less than $1,000, we're not prosecuted. These are all natural causes of why crime is increasing in Montgomery County. Crime is coming up out of Philadelphia. There is no real consequences. And we stand, Liz and myself stand with the police. We've been endorsed by, by multiple FOPs throughout the state. We've been endorsed by the Fire Arms Owners Group Against Crime because we're going to bring real solutions to Montgomery County and we're going to address and fight the crime and we're going to push it back out of Montgomery County. So thank you.
So Montgomery County, Montgomery County needs to be a place where families feel safe in their communities and where law enforcement or police are supported and where dangerous criminals are not released from jail on a reasonably low bail. And that's what's happening in Montgomery County. In 2020, they passed a pre-trial services program and some aspects of it are working. But there's an aspect where they're reducing the bail that the district justices have set and it's a revolving door. And the Montgomery County Police Chiefs Association has raised concern about this program, that criminals are being released and repeating their offenses. That has to stop. So we need to keep the bad guys in jail. And businesses, since we're talking to a Chamber of Commerce, are not going to locate in a place where there is crime. And companies and businesses cannot flourish if they do not feel safe. So we must address it. There's been an over double-digit increase in crime in the last two years, larceny, burglary, auto theft in Montgomery County. It's not acceptable and we need to get tough on crime.
Pennsylvania will be in the spotlight when it comes to the 2024 elections and there will likely be scrutiny on how elections are carried out in counties, including Montgomery County. Tell me what your approach will be to overseeing elections and if you would seek to make any changes with the way the county administers elections before the 2024 election?
Absolutely. So this is, this is absolutely critical. I'm going to come at this from the perspective that voting is a fundamental right. It's something that has been hard fought for. Many of the people in this room would not have had the right to vote at some point in our nation's history and we need to continue to protect that right. So when there are attacks on our system from those who don't like the results of the elections, we need to defend from, from those attacks. And one of them is the idea that there's rampant voter fraud or was in Pennsylvania in the last election, which is just a falsehood. And, and we need to make that very clear. Unfortunately, there's some people who believe that in this room, which is really detrimental to our democratic process. Now, the way we're going to address it is we're going to be as transparent as possible. We're going to let people watch every aspect of, of the, of the administration of the elections. We're also not going to throw out votes if somebody puts their birthday or the wrong date on the envelope, which is what some of the Republicans want to do. They think you lose your fundamental right if your handwriting isn't great, which is not the way that fundamental rights work. So I'm going to make sure that we protect every lawfully cast vote in Pennsylvania, in Montgomery County. And despite all the attacks that will come to Pennsylvania, we're going to make sure that here in Monco, we have a high voter turnout and everyone's voice is heard. Whether or not you're a Democrat, we're going to protect your right to vote.
So voting is an absolute for every resident within Montgomery County or throughout the United States. Problem is, is that there, people have lost the confidence in the voting system. For whatever reasons they have lost it. There's been more than enough evidence that's been presented. There's been videos that have been shown. There's been, it's just, there's been issues. I'm not, I'm not going to deny the fact. But here's the thing, in Montgomery County, what's most important is that we need to get in there and, and work and make sure that processes and procedures are put in place where every voter throughout the county feels confident in the system and that we are confident in the results. We have seen over the last couple of years, a lot of questions have been raised. We've seen examples at the county, when they're counting votes, they, they keep people back that they can't see what's going on. We have videos of, actually happened in Upper Dublin where somebody, Liz was probably going to mention this, but somebody was stuffed in a ballot box. So there are instances of things that are actually happening or have happened. What we need to do as county commissioners, we need to assure that we have a voting system in place that every individual has, absolutely has the right to vote and every individual will go to the voting box or do a mail-in ballot and feel confident that their vote is being counted. And, and at the end of the night, however the results come out, I know for as a county commissioner, I want to be able to stand in front of everyone and say that I have 100% confidence in these results and that's what we have to work towards.
So I've been a committee person in Upper Dublin for 20 years, standing at the polls. And I can tell you, if you haven't lived here, you wouldn't know what's been going on. And if you just work in Washington DC, you haven't seen. And I'm going to cite some examples of things that have occurred. And no, they're not widespread, but we need to clean things up. And we can do that and Tom and I can do that. Things like voters receiving the wrong ballot, too few ballots at polling places, incorrectly printed ballots, unsecured ballot boxes where individuals brought multiple ballots. And Tom referenced Upper Dublin. We have the head of the Democratic Party stuffing a drop box at early wee morning hours with, with ballots. And watchers kept away from the counting process. So there's a lot that can be done and we can work together and we can work with both parties to ensure that people feel confident in the results of the election. And we can do that together. So I'm very confident we can look at voter rolls and ensure that they're clean, not, you know, not the mess they are now. And Tom and I are going to work on that and it's certainly a priority to ensure that every vote counts. And we agree, every vote matters. And we love America and we love our state and we love our county. And we want to ensure that every vote is heard. But it does need to be done fairly and accurately. And at best I can say that the way the county is being run now is sloppy.
This actually brings me to some individual questions that I have. Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah. So, so I think about, when I think about this question, I think of my 103-year-old living grandmother. And I think about the march on Selma where people like me didn't have the opportunity to vote. And so for me, regardless of what side you are on the, on the aisle, I want to ensure that everybody's right to vote is protected. I want to make sure that we're investing in our voter services team and making sure that it's properly staffed. I want to ensure that there is transparency so that when people have questions, they feel like they're getting answers to the questions that they have. And I also think there's an opportunity to ensure that we're educating the community on the voting process. Turnout in the primary was abysmal. And a responsibility that we have, nonpartisan responsibility that we have is to proactively engage the community so that we're getting more people involved in the democratic process. And so I'm all for transparency. I'm all for making operational improvements so that the things, issues that we've had in the past don't repeat themselves. But at the end of the day, voting rights is a basic right and my ancestors worked hard and long to ensure that I could be sitting at this table, but everyone across Montgomery County has the right to vote. So I think we're all aligned on that and I'll make sure that our voter services team has the resources and tools necessary in, in order to deliver on our election.
Thank you and apologies for almost skipping over your question. This now brings me to some individual questions that I have for each of you. They are based on things that either you have said or your campaign has said or that you've posted on your website or, or somewhere else. Tom DiBello, you get the next first question. You say on your website that one of your priorities is to reduce taxes and eliminate wasteful slash excessive spending. Can you please identify where in upcoming budgets you would like to, you would look to make cuts that you think could result in reducing taxes? And again, I'm talking about future budgets, not existing projects that may be in the works.
Sure. So, great question. And I have said numerous times about cutting wasteful spending and reducing taxes. I'm not going to get into, start talking about cutting specific things out of the future budgets because what I'm going to talk about is when I got on the Springford School Board, the district was $280 million in debt. We had high taxes, high spending deficit. And what I did was I went in and I broke the budget down and, and really understood where every dollar went and understood why the money was being spent. And then put, actually did something crazy. We put accountability in place. So if we gave somebody money in the district, we wanted that that person was held accountable and we wanted to see results from that money. We, there's financial strategies need to be put in place. We put 12-year capital plans in place, we put technology plans in place, we put curriculum plans in place. All these things need to be established and put in place and then we need to look at the spending. But if I'm going to, when I'm sitting as a county commissioner and if somebody comes in and we give them a million dollars, you darn sure that I'm going to make sure that we understand how that money's being spent and what was the success of how that money was spent. We want to make sure that the money is being used correctly and not, and making sure that it's not being wastefully spent. There's an $18 million, and I'm not supposed to talk about this, but there's roughly an $18 million spending deficit currently in the budget, which will transfer into the next budget if it's not properly addressed. And that will actually escalate or grow higher. And also there was, the county got over $100 million in COVID money and when you start asking people, you don't know where that money went.
That's fine. And, and just to be clear, so I asked you if you could identify specifically where you would cut. You're not, you're not ready to answer that question?
No, I would cut everywhere where money's being wastefully spent.
All right, so Lisbury, the next individual question is for you. In an op-ed that actually both Republican candidates here took part on, you said, "We intend to clean up our voter rolls and eliminate drop boxes." Can you please explain how you define cleaning up voter rolls? And what would you say to voters who have used drop boxes in Montgomery County and perhaps would even want to use them to vote for you and find them convenient?
Right. So as, as I noted in Upper Dublin, we've seen that drop boxes have been the source of individuals dropping multiple ballots. Drop boxes are not required by state law. The county has decided to keep them. There are a couple still. And while the security around them has gotten better, it's still not sufficient. For, you know, since the beginning of time almost, we've had a system in place where people could vote either in person or they could vote by absentee ballot, which has really worked very well and has been secure. worked very well and has been secure. So I am not a fan of drop boxes. I think we can find better, more secure places for people to drop off their ballots. And again, this is about making sure that people feel confident in the results of the process and the election. So if, if there is discrepancies going on every time there's an election around a drop box, it seems to me it's an easy solution that doesn't provide too much hardship to our voters to abide by.
And can you define cleaning up the voter rolls?
Sure. So, you know, we hear very often about voter rolls having people on them who have since moved, who have since passed away. We have people who have looked at, gone to homes. We've done this throughout Montgomery County to see that people have moved or have passed away and are still in voter rolls. So it's a things that exists. And again, it's just a part of a sloppy process that's occurring at the county level and we definitely need to clean it up.
Thank you. Jamila Winder, Commissioner Winder, the next question is for you. You called yourself on your website, "An experienced management professional with proven political track record and service to the party." You were initially recommended by your party, the Democratic Party, to fill an open seat on the county commissioner. What do you say to voters who might worry that because of that, your loyalty may be to the party and its interests rather than to the larger community?
Great, great question. I'm happy to answer. So what I would say to that question is, as I said in my open, opening remarks, marks, I'm here to serve. You know, I probably shouldn't say this publicly, but when I was growing up, my dad was a Republican, my dad was a Democrat, right? And it was about doing the right thing, regardless of whether you are, your political affiliation. So what I would say is, my track record predates itself. So when I think about my time as a business executive, I've always, as a leader, I've always focused on building and nurturing teams and ensuring that everyone has the opportunity to be successful and leading, while meeting business objectives. When we think about my political experience, whether it's on the school board or as a supervisor at East Arton Township, it's about the issues, solving the issues that are facing people. So when somebody comes to a school board meeting or somebody comes to a board of commissioners meeting, I don't ask them whether they're a Democrat or a Republican. I ask them, "What's your issue and how can I help?" I'll leave, I'll give you an example. I, I was in the county courthouse a month ago and there was a woman that was in tears, leaving our sheriff's office. She couldn't find anyone to help her. She was getting ready, her house was getting ready to be put up for sheriff's sale. I didn't ask her if she was a Republican or a Democrat. I knew she needed help and she was in a moment of distress. And so at the core of me, it's about serving people.
The next question, the last individual question is Neale McKeeja for you. On your website, you say you will always fight on behalf of working people and the labor movement. We've recently seen politicians on picket lines during labor disputes. As a public official, what would be your approach to labor disputes in the region? And what would you say to both voters, individuals, and also businesses about how you would approach that and whether you would take sides?
It's a good question. So what I meant by that on the site, so as, as a lawyer, I worked on the side of employees who were oftentimes minimum wage workers.
Can't hear.
Sorry. Can you hear? Just, can anyone else hear?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just talk a little bit longer. I worked on the side of employees who were cheated out of wages, who were not paid for hours that they worked. And I have a commitment to make sure that we elevate the working standards of people in the county. Now, how can we do that through county government is, is an interesting question because there are many limitations based on the state and the township. But I think one example is to make sure that there's a coordinated place in county government so that when there are labor law violations, people can go there, whether it's a right that can be enforced federally or through state law or even locally in our Township Human Relations Commission. We should have a place in the county where employees can file and, and at least have direction as to where they can go to address what's happening in their workplace, whether they're not getting paid or they're dealing with a civil rights issue or otherwise. So I think making sure that the county is a resource would be my priority. And, you know, as opposed to your question on picking sides, I think, I think making sure that there's a fair playing field is the most important thing as an official and that's what I would prioritize.
Staffing has been a recent challenge for businesses as well as for local governments. Oh, and this, this next question, Tom Tabella, this next question, first one goes to you. Tell me what you would do to assist businesses facing this issue and also the county itself, keeping in mind, this may involve two different approaches because there may be times where you're competing against each other for the same workers.
Well, being a small business owner, I've experienced firsthand the difficulties of keeping a full staff. At one time, I contacted the unemployment office and said I had six positions that I needed to hire immediately and I wanted them to send me, or at least encourage people that were coming in to come apply for a job. And what was interesting about that conversation that I had was that I got back from the unemployment office, I'm not going to say specifically where, it wasn't, it wasn't locally, but when I got back, it was in Pennsylvania. But what I did get back was, "We don't do that." And I'm like, "What do you mean, we don't do that?" I said, "All I'm asking for is for the ability to let people know that are, that are receiving benefits that we're hiring." And what's important is that we need to have a better system in place that, that are getting people, matching them up with employers. We also need to look at, I've talked with some employers and a few issues that we have is that they're bringing in employees from out of Montgomery County. And I asked, you know, "Why is that?" And they said, "Well, we're, we're not really sure, you know, why people within Montgomery County don't want to fulfill these jobs." And so there's definitely things that we need to look at and understand, why are people not applying for jobs? We need to look at people that are receiving services and seeing if we can help them either retrain or re-educate, whatever it may be, to better position them for these jobs that are within Montgomery County. But that's what we need. We need a strong partnership with the businesses in Montgomery County and fulfill all these jobs that go unfulfilled.
It's the same question?
Yes, it's the same. We're back to questions for all of you.
Very good. Thank you. So at the county level, there's about a little over 2,400 employees and they are having trouble recruiting. And I, what I'd like to do as county commissioner is go in and do an assessment of the jobs that exist at the county level and job descriptions. I think from what I'm hearing, they're rather outdated. I would also note that there hasn't been tax increases, or excuse me, there hasn't been pay increases for some employees that have been there a substantial amount of time. So we want to look at all of that. I think we need to do a deep dive into sort of the human resources roles and determine what jobs people have and what they're doing. I would add that at the state level, they looked at eliminating a college degree for some jobs within the state level. And I thought that was an interesting idea. I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the county jobs description, but I think we need to look at the county job description and see, do we need a college degree for every job that the county has? And can we ease requirements to get good qualified people in there? Certainly, my, you know, I have family, as I noted, in the military, there's a lot of veterans who don't have college degrees, who I think would be superb employees. As far as the, the businesses, businesses know best who they, who they want and who they need. And I think one of the things I was looking at is, is the Sterling Act, which allows, and I know I'm going to be over 90 seconds, any second. There you go. So if you want to talk about the Sterling Act, I'm here after hours.
I get geeked out about this, this topic. And so for the last, for the last nine months, one of my number one priorities is focusing on our county workforce. We have 2,800 employees serving the residents of Montgomery County. And some of the roles are the lowest paying roles when you, when you look, you know, look at the salary bands. So what we have done is last board meeting, we presented the results of our compensation study. And for our unrepresented workers, we have, not everyone, but we've given salary increases and we've right-sized compensation. We compared, we did comparables with Delaware County, Bucks County, Chester County because we knew we were losing people at a fast clip. But it's not just about compensation. People have to be excited to come to work every day. We have people that are in high-pressure jobs. And so we need to ensure that we're implementing the right benefits, that we're implementing programs that help with employee morale and mental health. And so I've been going around the county, meeting employees where they are. I just had a lunch with our Way to Go winners the other day and I asked, "What keeps you in Montgomery County?" And I'm hearing the stories so that we then can share that more broadly with other people so they're excited to come to Montgomery County too. On the flip side, in terms of our businesses, I, you know, I don't have to, okay, that's the end. We'll talk about businesses as well.
So I think one of the most important issues that we can talk about is paid leave, parental leave and childcare. And Jamila and I both understand this, having very young kids now. Currently, Montgomery County has six weeks' leave. And that was a high standard when it was enacted. But if you look at the private sector, the nonprofit sector and elsewhere, it's more typical to have 12, 16, even up to six months in, in, in the private sector. And that's really important for moms. That's really important for, you know, a significant part of our workforce that currently, you know, has already struggled, most recently during COVID, in not having access to childcare, having to leave the workforce. So I think expanding our parental leave policies is one immediate thing I think we can do in working with our department heads. The other thing is actually having access to childcare. The county used to have, and other, the DA was just telling me, he was in Salt Lake City, and the DA's office there has childcare on-site, which makes it much easier for, for working parents to continue their work in the DA's office there. So I think those kinds of benefits, in addition to talking about salary, can really be the difference between someone staying in public service or someone leaving and not coming back.
Can I get a 30-second response or is that not?
Actually, we are a little bit behind and so we're going to have to move to the next part of our forum and that, did you, he did not mention your name, is that correct?
He didn't use your name.
Okay, all right. Yeah. We are a little bit behind. We're going to have to move to the next part of our forum, which is questions from our audience. So I'm sure you want to hear some of the things that they have to say, so. Oh, we're just, we're pulling them?
I read all the questions. Okay, there's two questions that don't have a person's name on it, so, and we chose one. So if, for this particular, for this particular question, this particular question, please stand up. And it says, I'll read it, "If another pandemic were to occur, would you support mask mandates and closing businesses?" Who asked that question? Okay. Well, we have this question back. So there's one or two questions that don't have someone's name, but if you guys will be able to address that question, it'd be great.
Yeah, I believe you have one, one minute each. One minute, one minute each. And the next person going first would be Liz Ferry.
I think it's me.
Is it, I think it actually might be Liz.
And I don't need a minute, no. I would, I would not implement a mask mandate and I would not close down, I would not recommend closing down. I think we saw what an absolute train wreck the decisions made by the county during the pandemic. Businesses have the right to stay open. Schools have the right to stay open. And the county should not be dictating to these local communities and local businesses whether they should be open or not. If you want to wear a mask, it's up to you, but they shouldn't be dictating it.
Yes, it may. I lost the order. So I had a baby in 2020. I was pregnant in 2020. And so I was someone that was in the most vulnerable of those that were facing COVID. And so what I would say is, I'm not a clinician. We have excellent public health professionals. We have our Centers for Disease Control, we have our PA Department of Health. Those are the people that I'm going to be taking recommendations from in terms of what we need to do to protect our community.
I'll just agree with what you said. I think we have to trust the people who are trained, who understand, you know, the potential scope and effect of the pandemic. And I think it's easy to look back and, and wish we didn't go through that, but I think at the time in 2020, we didn't know the extent of, of what was going to happen in this pandemic. And we have to remember, we've lost millions of lives and the steps that were taken saved millions of lives. So public health is an important role and we're going to trust the science and those who know best when we enact policies.
So during that time, I was fortunate or unfortunate, I was on the school board and I had to deal with the mandates shutting down the schools. And I was also a small business owner and I dealt with closures of businesses. So I saw it from both sides of it. My businesses were fortunate enough that we were deemed essential. But the problem with that was, you know, the local hardware stores were forced to be closed, but the large home people's were allowed to be open. We've learned a lot in the last couple of years related to COVID. And we also learned that a lot of steps that were taken over that time were not the best decisions made. And I'm not going to go back and say, "Well, all those decisions were bad decisions." But moving forward, I would not support any additional mandates or, or closures. I think that it's important as adults that we're allowed to make our own decisions. And I, when I was on the school board, I stood this way, I said, "If you want to wear a mask, if you feel comfortable wearing a mask, then wear one." But I wouldn't support mandates moving forward. The devastation that we did to our generation of kids is, is, we're not going back to that. We've lost an entire generation from an educational standpoint. If elected, do you commit to serve your full term? If elected, do you commit to serve your full term and not run for another office and pledge to hold only one elected office?
Tabella Winder, Commissioner Winder.
So when I was appointed on February 1st, I was sitting as the chair of the East Arton Board of Supervisors and I immediately resigned that post. And so I'm committed to holding the post of county commissioner for the next four years.
So yeah, so I don't hold any other office. I have no intention of doing that and I look forward to four years.
I have no intentions of holding another office and I have no intentions of running for another office after elected in November. Unlike a lot of our current row officers, are only working down in county part-time, I guarantee that I will be in Northtown, putting in a full, a full week, doing my duties for the county.
Yeah, and I, I commit that I absolutely would not run for another office while serving as a county commissioner. I will come to work every day, which is not happening now at the county level. The county row offices are not open every day and we need to get them open. And I will not hold another job while I'm serving as county commissioner. And I think that's important, that was an answer today. Because this is a full-time job and we get a big salary. And if you're going to take this job, you need to just do this job. It's not part-time. So I encourage everyone on this, this dais here to commit to not having another job while they're working on behalf of county residents.
Nancy Becker? Nancy, actually, that's two questions, but they've just answered the second one, so if you want to answer the first one.
Do you have experience working with and promoting small businesses?
Oh, I don't have a microphone anymore. Neale McKeeja, I believe that's, I believe you're the first one.
So I think in the context of... So I think in the context of, um, I think in the context of community engagement I have, uh, whether it's on, uh, educating, on various initiatives and programs, uh, I've always seen that having, uh, a relationship with the business community and a wide array of businesses, uh, is important on any public policy initiative that you want to accomplish. So for example, on homelessness, uh, it's really critical to have not only a whole of government effort to address it, but, you know, a whole of the community, whether it's businesses or nonprofits or churches, um, you've got to be able to, in order to enact public policy successfully, you've got to engage the business community, and that's something that's going to be important to me. And in fact, in the Commissioner's Office, uh, we should have, uh, a liaison who's specifically focused on engaging, uh, business and private sector on our initiatives.
I'm sorry, what was the question again? Because that was all over the place.
Do you have experience working with and promoting small businesses?
Absolutely. I mean, uh, obviously being a small business owner, I've, I've been partnered with other small businesses, uh, but as well as the reason, when I was, uh, the President of the Local Township Economic Development Committee, what we did, why we won the award is because, um, one of the reas, big things that went on in Limerick at the time is they built the outlets out, there's premium outlets out, so I'm sure everybody in this room's been there. I led the effort to, uh, have a job fair and get, um, all those, uh, businesses that were, that be staffed on opening day. And that was a, it was a huge effort. I worked with the local businesses, I worked with the chambers, I worked with the PA career link, uh, so I'm a big advocate working with small businesses. I wasn't, like I mentioned, a small business owner, um, and, and that's what we would need, that will continue, will be for, is when I'm sitting on the County Commissioner, I actually want to engage those organizations more. I'm not going to keep adding more liaisons. We do that, we do that really well in government, add liaisons, add liaisons, but then nothing comes out of it. We need action, and that's the type of leadership that Liz and I will bring to the county.
So I, I have, uh, the last 15 years worked for the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce, whose membership is about 80% small businesses. So I've spent, uh, you know, the last 15 years working on behalf of and working with small businesses to help them grow, fighting tax increases in Harrisburg, uh, helping them, uh, work towards reducing regulations and red tape at all levels of government, um, working to help businesses open for business in Philadelphia, Montgomery County, Bucks and Chester and Delaware Counties. So I have extensive experience helping small businesses grow and flourish, uh, working on healthcare issues, infrastructure issues, pension issues. So a host in a range of issues to help small businesses grow. And we do have a liaison, he's called the Director of Commerce, um, and we do have a commerce department, uh, that, uh, also needs some revamping.
So this is an area that I'm super passionate about in working with the business community. So professionally, for the better part of 20 years, I've had the privilege of traveling, quite frankly, around the world, working with businesses of all shapes and sizes and really, um, helping them, uh, with organizational excellence. I spent a decade at Drexel University doing that body of work. Uh, what I would also say as a school director and as a supervisor in East Norton, again, you know, being in a small community like East Norton, our small businesses are the lifeblood of our community. We don't have the types of businesses like the Upper Marion's have. And so as we've had new businesses wanting to get off the ground, we've been right there alongside of them, helping them navigate a very complex process. So I think of, you know, the Kids Connects, uh, the standalone childcare center, I think of the Hush Spa that just opened in Collegeville, you know, I think of the Via Venidos where everybody loves water ice. So I'm, I'm committed to helping, uh, the small business community.
Uh, this is actually the last question for the, the close, uh, for the county's closing, and here you go, Pauline.
Hi, I'm so happy you all are here. It's, it's really interesting listening to what we answered these questions. Um, my question is, well, it, I didn't write it down the way I really wanted to ask it, so I'm going to ask it the way I really want to ask it. And that is, um, a lot of things got passed, because I brought this up at the Commissioner's meetings, Jamila might remember, a lot of things get passed from the Commissioners that are not really told to the public prior to signing contracts and getting them passed. And I'll give you an example, the $9.5 million that was spent on the Coroner's Office in Eagleville. We didn't know anything about it until they cut the ribbon. The next thing is the prison. They want to knock down the prison that, on 35 East Aerie Street, which is a historic building. And, uh, basically two people want it knocked down, and that's Ken Lawrence and Tom LaPera, who is the President of the North Towne Council. So, uh, my question is, how are you going to let the public know before you make your decisions and before you sign any contracts? Because that's not happening now. Thank you.
Uh, I believe, Tom, I believe that you are first one, I think it's your last question, so we can just go.
Um, I don't know if I could do that in a minute, but that's a great question. So, you know, we, we always hear during campaigns transparency, transparency from politicians, and then after they get elected, we don't hear anything, we don't see anything about transparency. What occurs at the township, I mean, at Commissioner meetings now, uh, is amazing to me. Uh, I sat on elected officials as a supervisor and a school board, our agenda is, we're very detailed and very, uh, informative to our communities. We also allow public comment at the beginning of a meeting on agenda items only, and then we allow public comment at the end of the meetings on, on anything that they'd like to talk about. We didn't run from our community and say, have these rules, I don't even know where they made, made them up from. But it's important that everything's communicated. What's, what gets approved at Commissioner meetings, what is amazing to me, because there's never any discussion, there's never any questions, there's nothing. Liz and I have had this conversation that on prospective board meetings, we never would be making approvals or agreeing to approve millions of dollars without answering and asking really hard, driven questions of what was being presented. And that's, has to change in Montgomery County, and that's what Liz and I will definitely do.
That's time.
Well, I think, actually, I think it's. So as a township commissioner in Upper Dublin, um, I'm going to echo, uh, what Tom said. Absolutely, uh, you have a, a wide-ranging discussion, uh, with residents about the contracts that you're reviewing, and you discuss them. And as he noted, it's so interesting, there's, there's no discussion about any of the items. They just are voted on and approved. So you really don't know, uh, what the Commissioners are voting on, who it affects. And I'll add, and it hasn't been raised today, there's no assessment of any of the money that's been spending, there's no audit, there's no, "This program is working well, that's why we're increasing funding," or "This program isn't working well, that's why we're cutting it." There's never any real detailed discussion about the programs and funds in Montgomery County, and that's not acceptable. We need to do a full-scale audit of these programs and determine what the taxpayer dollars are going towards. I would add that having meetings on Thursdays at 10:00 AM, we like to joke, is convenient for no one. So we'd like to take it on the road and have meetings at night in different townships so residents can hear about what we're voting on. Thank you.
So, Pauline, good to see you, thanks for your question. Uh, Pauline is always, uh, at our Board of Commissioner meetings, and I would encourage more people to come to our Commissioner meetings. I recognize that the, the time is, can be challenging for, for working professionals. So what I would say is, we recently made a change to publish more detail, um, before the Board of Commissioners meeting. That was, uh, you know, a move that we made last, last week. So, um, transparency is not just the buzzword. Uh, really, um, want to ensure that our residents know what's happening in the county. I want to ensure that stakeholders know how money is being spent. Uh, we absolutely have internal controls and audits in terms of how we're spending money. There's always room to improve that. Um, but for me, uh, it's, there's, you know, I'm not the County Commissioner that's looking to hide anything. Um, I want to be transparent about what we're doing with your tax dollars, and we may not always agree, uh, but at least you know where the money's going. Thank you.
I'll, I'll mirror what Jamila just said, and, you know, just as a matter of practice, I think one of my commitments will be to really look at what other county Commissioners are doing around the Commonwealth and to enact the best practices that, uh, involve the community and take public input and make sure that people, uh, are weighing in, um, for major decisions. And then, you know, the final thing I think is really important, I just want to thank our moderator, uh, for covering this, and, um, you know, a lot of this is going to be done by local journalism, and so it's just really important that, um, we, we engage with, uh, the media as well and make sure that they're hearing what's going on and able to cover it. Because, you know, there's, there's been a, you know, a major loss in terms of local journalism in recent years, and many papers have, have gone under, so it's just really important for us as Commissioners to make sure that we're communicating through the media as well whenever we make these decisions. Thanks.
Tom, I believe. You're the one, you're the only one who hasn't spoken on this one?
He did.
I did.
You spoke on this one?
I'll, I'll speak again if you.
No, I think we're, I think we're good. All right, then we are going to move to our final, uh, piece of this, which is, um, closing statement from each one of you. Um, and you will have one minute, uh, for that. Um, all right, so who went last, you went first last time, Jamila, is that correct?
No, I don't.
It was Liz, Jamila, Tom.
Okay, all right, so, um, Jamila Wyder, uh, you are going to be going first for your closing statement, you have up to one minute. Great, well, thank you so much, uh, for giving us a little bit of your day. Uh, we need to make sure that people that are coming out to vote on November 7th are informed. And, uh, this is such a critical role. Um, and so I want my final statement, I just want to make sure that you encourage your, your friends, your family, your neighbor, your business associates to get out and exercise their, their right to vote. Uh, for me, this is not about politics, it's about serving. When we think of our vulnerable, our seniors, I'm caring for disabled parents, our children, I've got Max who's three. Um, those dealing with mental health and substance use disorder, that's my brother, right? So I'm bringing perspective to the table, not only with my business experience, but based on lived experiences. So what you'll get in me is truly a Commissioner that will fight for all residents of Montgomery County, regardless of how you pray, regardless of how you look, regardless of how you vote. Thank you.
I want to thank again everyone who helped put this together, um, and give us the opportunity to see all of you in person. Uh, Jamila and I have been across the county. Um, I went to the furthest part of the county in Palm, for those of you, most of you have probably not been there, um, at the Palm Tavern, if you have. Um, we should go to Bingo Night sometime, but, um, it's really been an extraordinary opportunity. Uh, it's a very big county, you're going to see us everywhere. Uh, we are committed, as Jamila said, to representing everyone. Um, three out of four of us up here are going to serve, so I like our odds. Um, and I'm looking forward to really, uh, engaging in a constructive dialogue, uh, should we be elected, um, uh, with everyone who makes it and has the chance to serve. So, um, I want to thank everybody again, and I would be deeply honored to serve you as Commissioner.
First, I want to thank everyone that, uh, scheduled and, and put this event on. It was a great event today. I want to thank, uh, the opportunity for us to come and talk, and I want to thank our moderator for doing a great job. Um, it's a little unfortunate that we didn't get a little back and forth between the Commissioners, but that's okay. I mean, what's important is that this is an extremely important election on, on November 7th, and Liz and I are working hard. The thing about Liz and I, we don't, we've been all over this county over the last 30 years, so these, uh, you can name out, uh, townships wherever, I guarantee you, we've been in these townships over the last 30 years. So this isn't just a, a new thing for us to get out into the community, we've been in the community for many, many years. Uh, this election is coming down to a big thing, or a couple of big things. You know, we have high taxes, we have high crime, we have drugs coming into the communities, and we have, um, a lot of questions as far as the direction of the current county, uh, leadership. And, you know, we, we, the one question Pauline asked about transparency, it's a poor question, because again, we don't see anyone answering or talking about any of these important issues at these Commissioner meetings. So I want to thank everyone, and I look forward to serving you, uh, for the next four years as your next County Commissioner with Liz Ferry.
So I ask people when I meet them, we don't talk about their political party, I ask them to look at the resumes and qualifications of Tom and myself. And we have superb local government, county, state, business experience to do the job of County Commissioner, and that's the job. You're managing a big budget of about a $530 million. You have to have the experience, and you have to understand the county and the issues and the people that live here. So I'm asking for your vote for Tom and I on November 7th, because we are the common sense, hard-working people of integrity running for this office. And we need good government in Montgomery County. You've all seen it in the Philadelphia Inquirer covering the pay-to-play. It's disgraceful, and we need to clean up the courthouse and have people who work hard every day, show up to work every day and work hard on your behalf.
Thank you all of you for your time. I have more questions for you, perhaps you'll get them from me someday. Uh, but for now, that, uh, that concludes our questions. Ryan, do you have anything else?
No, thank you all, you guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.